I'd like to call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting January 4th, 2021 to order. The first thing I'd like to do, you'll notice that Commissioner Lane Furr is not with us tonight, and the reason he is not is Lane lost his wife, Phyllis, to COVID-related COVID, and I think she had a heart attack and she passed away yesterday. So therefore, I would like to entertain a motion that we excuse Commissioner Lane Furr from this meeting as an excused absence.
So move.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And keep Lane and his family in your prayers and thoughts. Tough, tough situation. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Allman for invocation, pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the freedoms that we have in this country, and thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, we lift up Commissioner Furr and his, his family and their loss, and pray that you be with them and bless them, and all the folks in our community who've suffered from COVID-19. I pray that you please be with them, be with our county staff, and all those who are working to combat it. God, I pray for my fellow commissioners, pray that our decisions tonight be uplifting and glorified in your name. I pray also in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, Commissioner Allman. At this time, if you would, I think commissioners have had time to look over the agenda. Is there any adjustments, or if there's no adjustments, I would seek approval of the agenda?
I'd like to add to the agenda if we can, quick one, to Dr. Cityville, more community health, like, like this.
Okay, let's add that to the agenda, and we'll put that in item number nine, and move the consent, consent agenda to item 10. Any other changes? No other changes, seek a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. First, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got a motion carries. Would like to recognize presenter Melanie Hollis, the library director.
Good evening and Happy New Year to y'all. I'm here this evening because we have had a resignation on the Library Board of Trustees. Lindsey Gobush-Fulk had to resign because she was unable to make the noontime meetings due to her children being out of school. So we need to have that seat filled. It should expire on June 30th of 2024. The Board of Trustees looked over all of the applications, and I think Tyler included those in your packets for the evening. The Board recommends Stephanie Brown. Ms. Brown is a regular library user, and she's a resident of Baden, and we do not have any representation on our board from the Baden area. We're pretty well covered. Stanfield, Nor, Stanfield, Oakboro, and Locust all have good coverage, and I know we have two from Albemarle, so. But we'll leave it up to the pleasure of, of you gentlemen.
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Brown, the board. She's pretty experienced in the media, but why does that come into the, the media? I'd like to nominate her.
It's like a head, you know, starting with me, in the board right there.
Any other nominations? You read none, let's vote. All in favor of Stephanie Brown to fill this Board Trustees position, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that term ends June 30th, 2024.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Debbie Bennet, glad to have you with us.
I am so happy to be here tonight, and I do thank you for the opportunity to address the Board regarding the 2021 Community Health Assessment. I know the excitement is just difficult to bear, but I will try to hold it down, and I hope you will too. Now, in 2021, that is the year the state requires us to conduct a countywide community health assessment. What that means is that residents in Stanley County ages 15 and older, 15 years and older, are being asked to complete a survey that can be accessed either at the Health Department's website or the county's website, January 14 through February 17. Now, you may be asking yourself, why is this so important? Why is it so important that every eligible resident in this county complete a survey? Well, one of the main reasons is the results of this survey tell us what health and community issues are important to the people of Stanley County. And we need to know, what do the people think? Not, doesn't necessarily mean what I think's important, but what do the people think are important health and community issues? And from the results of the survey and the data we get from the state, three issues are selected. Community issues or health issues are selected, and the majority of our resources are utilized to address them. Not completely, but a large portion. Just to give you an example, prior results led to the establishment of a comprehensive plan to address substance misuse in Stanley County. So that is one of the results of this survey. Now, this report is not one that collects dust on a shelf, and it's not hidden in a folder on your computer. This one is actually useful. It not only gives us direction, it helps us access funds. Now, this report is used by agency, nonprofits, and other groups to access funding, because it's not unusual for a grantor to say, we'd like to see a community health assessment or a community assessment done before we even consider your application, or if we're going to consider your application, we want to see what your community thinks. And this is a great way to help our community. They don't have to go through and do a community health assessment or a community assessment. We've already done it. They can access it on the counties or on the Health Department's website at any time. And in fact, we're even willing to, and have done this, is if specific zip codes want information, we will plan one or prepare one for them, so they can see what their specific people in their community think. Now, Atrium Health Stanley and the Stanley County Health Department are responsible for conducting the community health assessment and preparing the report. Again, all residents 15 years old and older are eligible to complete this survey from January 14 through February 17 on the county or Health Department website. Folks, this is exciting. I love to see the results of this, because it is so meaningful for this community, and I liken it to making sausage. It's a messy process, but the end product is wonderful. So, I ask you and everybody in our community to complete a survey and be part of the solution to health and community issues that we have identified here. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bennet?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. Two things I don't like about wearing masks is, one, that it fogs up my glasses, and the other is I can't see people smile. And a smile like yours lights up a room, and I'm so glad you took yours off for this presentation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bennet?
I'm back again, just when you thought it couldn't get better.
You are, but I have a question about the survey.
Oh, okay.
These are annual surveys, correct?
Every three years.
Every three years.
When we don't do a survey, we do a state of the county health report, and that has just been completed for 2020.
Do we have any idea what numbers, number of people that might, we're hoping might take the survey?
In the last survey, we had over 900 completed, and we had 813 surveys we could use.
And I guess the other question, will the newspaper and the local radio station publicize this survey?
Yes, I'm off to the radio station tomorrow, and I have a news release. The library is helping us to get the information out. We're, we're getting assistance from churches, from the community, so it's, this is going to be a challenging year to get information out, because usually, we can go out into the meetings and talk with people, and this year, that just isn't quite as possible.
Thank you for the presentation, and yes, you are up again, and you're going to be talking about adult day care healthcare facility.
I know.
We all up here need to pay attention, except for Commissioner Allman.
Now, the most recent community health assessment was done in 2018, and that highlighted the need for adult day healthcare in this county. We have a large portion of folks, well, it doesn't even have to be 65 and older, these are adults 18 and older. This facility will serve 18 and older adults. Now, adult day healthcare was listed 11 on this community health assessment as a community issue. However, when you go a little bit deeper into the data, adult day healthcare was the number one community issue for those 55 to 64, and it tied for number one for those 75 years old and older. So there is a distinct need for this particular service. It's between the, it's not a nursing home, it's before the nursing home, where people want to be able to stay home, but they can't stay home alone, so somebody needs to be there, but they can go to this adult day healthcare center and be with other adults, and it has proven to be really a nice resource for adults. I'm part of a local committee that is associated with Coltrane Life Center that is, that is going to provide the healthcare services in Stanley County. Now, the Coltrane Life Center has purchased two buildings in Albemarle to provide adult day healthcare services. And the reason I'm here tonight is to let you know that we are starting this, because I know it's been in the community for a while, but we actually have purchased the buildings. We're now starting our capital campaign fund, or capital campaign, to assist with needed renovations and startup costs. And I want you to know that we will have this service, we're working on this service. We have individuals in this county who are very interested in making sure this happens. And again, it's a much-needed service. I can't tell you how many times I get asked, when are you going to open? When are you going to be available? Because once this is open and available, adults who cannot stay home alone, their caregivers can have some freedom to do things, maybe get a job, maybe just get some free time. This has been life-saving for those who need the facility, and for those who are caregivers for those who need the facility. So I just wanted you to know, this is happening, we're excited about it, and it, like I said, we have purchased the buildings, now we're in the process of getting funds to renovate. So thank you very much, I wish you all a wonderful new year, and I just thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak. This is just, just way too exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, I would like to recognize David Jenkins, our Health and Human Services Director, to give us a COVID-19 update.
Good evening, Chairman Lawhan, Commissioners, good to see you again. I'm here to give you the update of most local, most local and recent data for Stanley County. Got several slides, hopefully you've got the, the handouts from, fresh off the press from later, earlier this evening, I was able to print out for you all for this specific presentation. So, Public Health Command Center was activated on March 10th, and that just tells you how much time we've been working at this. It's nine months, 43 weeks, 300 days, or 7,192 hours that your public health staff and team and some of our EMTs that are helping us right now have been working at this, and some of our volunteers from other departments. Here's the most recent data as of this evening. We're currently at 52,396 total completed tests. Total residents tested are 27,489. Positive cases are currently at 4,645. We see an increase in reinfections today, we are currently at seven, and if you recall again, that's after three months they test positive again, that's considered a reinfection. Our current active cases are at 902, that's probably close to what we've seen, the highest that we've seen in, maybe overall. Recovered is currently at 3,650. Unfortunately, our hospitalizations are up to 30, and our total deaths are now at 93. Percent positive as of last week, based on the seven-day average, is at 10.7%. Outbreaks are at eight, two clusters, and that gives you a breakdown of the actual transmission type. Seen a lot of contact and community, but a lot more contact, as, as we mentioned last month, to family members and friends spending time together.
And also, do you have the difference between outbreak and cluster, if you want to step out?
Outbreak is...
Is where people live in a place?
Yes, sir. Overnight stay versus a cluster. That's correct. So place of business, something of that nature would be a cluster. Yes, sir.
Like a school would be a cluster.
Correct.
Like Carville would be outbreak.
Outbreak, since they have the overnight stay. That's correct. Good question. Sir?
If nursing home?
Nursing home is considered outbreak. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So here's our latest graph, it shows the information breakdown. As you can see, week 43, which is last week, was our highest number of, of positive cases reported in a week, which is well over 400. Again, last week's percent positive cases were lower, but our percent positive is 10.7%. That, we expect that number to go up as far as percent positive. And again, percent positive is the number that tests positive based on the total tests conducted for Stanley County. So we continue to track this data. We're definitely not trending in direction we want to, but that kind of gives you an indication of where we are. And we, the expectation is probably to see an increase in these numbers, cause of post-holiday, Thanksgiving's, well, Christmas at this point, and New Year's.
Director Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
I know we had, like we said, our numbers are a little bit delayed, 10.7%, but I think I did, I'm on the way here, I got to do more state, state numbers that are, for current hospitalization today, and I did it, this report is 16.7.
Is that statewide?
State average.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think you tend to trail the state a little bit, more or two percent less than good, not greatly as good, so are you expecting now like 13 and a half, 15 and a half percent next week?
Well, it certainly would be speculation on my part, but it would certainly not add a question in there, anywhere between that 13% up to that 16%, unfortunately. And we are still testing, currently testing, and I'll get into that a little bit more, three days a week. So as we get into vaccination, we're going to make some changes there, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that as we proceed. So, a lot of questions that we're receiving, we've been hammered with calls today, you've all probably received calls about vaccinations, I'm sure. There is a priority for that, and what that looks like, and this is a, comes right off the state DHHS's website. 1A is obviously we're prioritizing our, our healthcare workers, long-term staff, I might have mentioned this last week, are being handled by Walgreens and CVS. We're fortunate to have them come in and take care of our long-term nursing home and long-term care staff. We're prioritizing everything outside of the Atrium network, as far as our providers in the, in the county. We begin scheduling those folks this week, so we plan on getting a lot of those scheduled, as well as dentists, and we'll get our pharmacists in place, and I've got a breakdown on the next slide that gives a little bit more detail. But basically, your 1A is going to be your healthcare workers administering vaccine and all the healthcare workers that are actually caring for and working directly with our COVID-19 patients. Then we're going to get into 1B, which is our adults 75 years or older, and our frontline essential workers. And then they break down 1B as group 1, 2, and 3. This is where the 75 years or older comes in, regardless of health status. Group 2 is our healthcare workers and frontline essential workers 50 years or older, and group 3 is our healthcare workers and frontline essential workers of any age. And I actually have a slide that kind of breaks down what is included as an essential worker in that, and I'll share that in a coming slide. Group 2 will be our adults at high risk for exposure and increased risk of severe illness. And see, that's great, broken down as groups as well, with group 1 being 65 to 74 years old, regardless of health status, 16 to 64 years old with high-risk medical conditions that increase the risk of severe disease from COVID, cancer, COPD, heart conditions, things of that nature, would qualify for that group. And group 3 is anyone who's incarcerated, living in other close-group settings, who is not already vaccinated due to age, medical condition, or job function. A lot, the reason behind they're placed under a 2 is because of the concrete setting, again, they're really high at risk, being grouped that close together, incarcerated. Group 4 is going to be your essential workers not yet vaccinated. And then we'll move on to the Phase 3, which includes students, college and university students, K through 12 students aged 60 and over, younger children will only be vaccinated when the vaccine is approved by them. And then we got group 4, which is everybody else at that point. So I did want to go a little bit into what priority 1A, which if you notice, that's our first prioritization group is. These are the types of people that can meet this definition, and you see it's community health workers, EMTs, environmental services, hygienists, dental hygienists, anybody, it's morticians, funeral home staff, nurses assistant, nursing care aides, personal care aides, pharmacists, physicians, public health emergency preparedness workers, and respiratory techs, et cetera. So, that kind of gives you an idea, a little bit deeper dive in what 1A is and how we're prioritizing that. Again, many of these folks that fit this prioritization are actually going to be vaccinated this week. The plan is to vaccinate Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, so we hope to get, we're probably vaccinating as many as 50 to 60 per drive-through clinic, which lasts about five to six hours. I think we're going to try actually to, to work from 8:45, and forgive me, a lot of this logistics is coming, coming up as of today. 8:45 to 3:45 is the plan to, to actually vaccinate, so we got that span of time that we're going to try to get as many in as possible. What's tricky about the Moderna is that each vial will allow us 10 vaccines, so once we tap into one of those vials, we have to make sure we have 10 folks available for vaccine, because we don't want any of it to go to waste. We only have a six-hour time span to put that vaccine to use. So we're very strategic in how we administer this vaccine to make sure that none of it's going to waste and is being utilized throughout the community as it needs to be. So a little bit about vaccination priority B, this is going to be our frontline essential workers, as defined by the CDC, and this is our first responders, our firefighters, our police, sheriff's office, education teachers, support staff, daycare, any of our manufacturing locally, correction workers, public transit workers, grocery store workers, food and agriculture, and US postal workers. With that said, we're, like I said, we currently are, we've been conducting more testing. Our goal as a health department, we've been in contact with OptinServe, who's currently serving Western Stanley County at the Crutchfield location. Our goal is to get them here, hopefully work out at the senior center, Monday through Saturday, let them handle the testing, the state contracts directly with them, that way we have a location in Albemarle, we have a location in Locust, and we're, we can strictly focus on vaccination Monday through Friday at that point, with the hope of running dual lanes and trying to get up to 100 to 120 a day is going to be our goal moving forward. Because we realize there's an expectation, folks want the vaccine, they should get the vaccine, and from a public health perspective, prevention's where we come in as a public health entity. So that's, that's something we're really going to be focusing on, making that transition this weekend and next. Again, it's a work in progress, we're trying to get everything lined up, but more vaccine we can get out, more we can protect people in our community. Again, we recommend folks to wear a mask if you're out and about. When I say mask, most people have the cloth mask, should be two layers or more. Most people use to wear the two-layers mask, wait six feet apart, and continue to wash your hands and sanitize as you're out and about. Some folks do have surgical masks or N95s, and they are probably more appropriate, more protection that you need, but it certainly works as well, so. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll do my best to try to answer some of those this time.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Director Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, just two questions, if, on the testing part, one on, the first one on testing part, if you live in Stanley County and you're tested in another county, does that come back to the test here or in the county that you're tested?
Yes, sir. That, the results would feed back to us as they are resident of our county, and then that we would go through the process of notifying them at that point.
And my second question is, I had a gentleman call me today, that he's in the 1B1 category, and he said that he had, he had tried to call the Health Department, and through the prompts, he went on and on and on, he finally, the last prompt was to speak to a nurse. He said that he got into that one, and it wouldn't let him go anywhere else.
Yeah.
Is that, is the best part to your spot, your shot, or is to call the Health Department to get a reservation?
As far as getting the...
Vaccine.
Vaccine? And I did, I had a chance to respond.
I didn't try the data, I was going to try it myself.
Well, he's, he emailed me, and matter of fact, I said, well, I'm going to double check, because I know the phone line had been working, even though we've been inundated and a lot of it's going to voicemail.
I was saying.
But I did check, and I think he was hitting a 1, and he kept hitting Spanish, and he should have hit a 4, and he got a nursing voicemail for a nurse. And I explained that to him, I said, but, then I asked him what his criteria was, and, and I didn't hear, get a response back, I mean, was he a healthcare worker? And I said, we could try to figure out where you would come in on that.
He's in the 1B group 1.
1B group 1. So, and you know, at this point, we're not vaccinating group 1B at all, but our hope is over the next couple of weeks, maybe into next week, if we're able to get the, you know, our, our numbers up for the dual lane and redeploy staffing that are providing other services, maybe we can start 1B next week, and then we'll get folks, probably end up being a first-come-first, sir, but we'll certainly put that information out via social media, website, press release, and radio as well, to make sure people are aware.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions. On the numbers you gave us for today, we're just coming through the holidays. Now, the active cases, they go down, do you have, do you pretty much have to contact all the people and clear them to come off the list? Are y'all pretty much caught up on that, or with the holidays, are y'all backed up a little bit?
I would, I'd say we're probably, Commissioner backed up on everything right now with the, the vaccination calls coming in and us conducting the, the case investigations. A lot of the contact tracing is dependent upon us feeding them over to, to a contract group using a CCTO tool, and they do a lot of that follow-up as well. So unfortunately, we are a little behind, but we're trying to work through that process, work with Andy to, to provide us a couple of staff members, we're redeploying some current staff that are in place, we're using locum tenens to bring in a couple of people where we can. That's challenging at times, but we're trying to get back to, I guess, trying to get our numbers back down. But we're really trying to focus more, not so much on the contact tracing as we are the vaccination at this point, because that's where we're really going to have our need, the needs that need to be met in the community, getting everybody vaccinated. Understand the importance of contact tracing, but, you know, at the end of the day, identifying positives is good, we need the people to quarantine or isolate in place if they're positive, but we really got to work on getting the vaccination out in the community.
And the other question, I guess, the vaccination, how long after they take the first, they have to take two doses?
With the Moderna... With the Moderna, it's 28 days.
Okay, so 28, so what's going to happen? I guess it's going to almost double your effort in 28 days because then you're going to start doing first time, you're going to have the first timers and the second timers all merging.
Logistically, it's a little concerning from a public health standpoint, but we certainly will manage, we'll probably end up having another day set aside that's just for the second dose, that way we're not confused, you know, even though it's, it's all going to be handled through software and tracked through software that we'll be comfortable that, you know, maybe easier for us logistically just to provide the second dose on a separate day from the first dosers that are coming in for the next phase, so.
One of the eye-opening things I see on this, and it wasn't, I didn't even think about until you first started posting the reinfections. I mean, there's so many people, you hear them say, well, I had it so they don't bother to wear a mask anymore, and, you know, you can get reinfected and spread it for a second time. And also asymptomatic people, they can spread, correct? Because I know there's, some people now are starting to say that
Yeah, typically.
Asymptomatic people are not going to spread COVID.
Asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, based on, most of the studies that are out there, folks, it has been indicated that there is viral shedding that takes place before then. So you can be asymptomatic, have viral shedding, and that's through talking, speaking, coughing, sneezing, that's how you see the viral shedding, that's how it's transmitted, that's why this is so contagious that, you know, you might not even know it. And then some people have very mild symptoms, and others have very severe symptoms. So, symptoms range, and a lot of people think, well, I just got a little, you know, my seasonal cough, or I get a cold every year, and then they come find out later that they get feeling body aches and other things to find out they have COVID. You don't think nothing of it at the time, but in the meantime, you're obviously exposing other people, and they're not aware, just thinking it's a little cold or something. So, again, that's why we're just, if you're feeling symptomatic, it's good to go ahead and try to get tested, that way you can identify that and isolate if possible.
Also on the exponential growth and stuff, I guess it's like Thanksgiving to Thanksgiving. They say right now, like last week or so, is when they really were getting the peak of the people who were spreading it because of the Thanksgiving gatherings, because they spread it to X amount of people, who spread it to X amount of people, who spread it to X amount of people. I guess all the way through January and February, they're talking about a bigger surge because of the Christmas and New Year's holidays and travel and everything else.
Yes, sir. And that's why our numbers were so high last week, is probably coming from the holidays and you count backwards. Based on our, Zach Moore's our state epidemiologist, and Dr. Moore had projected, well, based on the data they have and the information they have, is we're potentially going to peak March or April with COVID, and that's even with the vaccine. So, it looks like we're going to continue to climb based, and again, I'm deferring to the experts, that's what they do for a living, they're well-educated and have all the information in front of them and well-connected, but that's what, that's unfortunately what they're sharing with us. So, in the meantime, we're trying to vaccinate, 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 and just educate and let folks know, you know, try to keep a distance from folks and work, continue to wear a mask and sanitize and wash up.
Another thing, I guess, if the stats are the same from about a week ago or so, that you sent me, the two highest age groups that are, they have tested positive are the 25 to 49-year-old age group and the 40, what, be 50 to 60 is second most or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know what we can do as county commissioners to get the word out to people, and especially Zach, I don't know if you maybe can come up with some ideas for the young people and stuff to spread the word, because, you know, again, the younger people are going to be most likely to not feel bad, you know, and they're not going to get as sick, so they're still, they feel invisible and they go out and about and don't realize how much they're going to spread it to others. So I don't know what kind of initiatives we can do, or what type of plans we can do for county commissioners. Like Tommy, you did a great job when this first came out with you and Wayne, you and, you know, with, with, with the
I don't.
Well, whatever, you were doing good with the mask and the sanitizer. Y'all did a fantastic job with that, and that was getting the word out, even your videos. I don't know, just individually as commissioners, we can just try to spread the three things. And maybe at some point, I'm worried to death about this, you know, for where it's heading. And public health is a huge issue. My last comment, then I'll shut up, I promise. You know, this is all anecdotal, I guess, is what you see is when you're out and about, things you see. And I see now places like Lowe's or the grocery stores, it seems to be a lot, getting a lot better with people wearing masks and stuff. And we have a mask mandate thing in Vacandash, and people seem to be fine with it. But when I look at places like gas stations, convenience stores, places where people run in and out, a lot of them, they don't wear masks, and I sit there and I think, okay, evidently they're not in the habit to wear a mask, because I tell you what, I wear it everywhere. The last time I didn't wear a mask in a store was at Speedway on 52, and that was back in June, I pumped gas and I walked in the store, I took two steps, it's like, oh my God, I didn't wear a mask, you know? So, I just urge people to just take this thing seriously, especially indoors is a whole lot more contagious than outdoors. And also, if you can mention how you work with the last thing, this, okay, that wasn't my last thing, this is really my last thing.
Might have to put you on a timer, Peter.
You need to, you need to. The schools, I commend you guys for working with the schools, and what kind of work have you done with the schools to kind of help them with?
Well, we're very fortunate to have the school nurses there, so we initially got, worked with them closely on contact tracing, case investigation, things of that nature, because they've been handling their own for the school systems. We have been holding weekly calls, official weekly calls. Now, we have daily calls with the staff there, you know, as needed with our nurses, just to kind of bounce information off each other. But there's a lot of communication that goes on, making decisions on whether we have a cluster, whether we need to send students or staff home, or close a school, a lot of that information, we kind of work together and take it, strategize as a process of, here's what we know, and based on the guidelines, here's what our recommendation is. So, that's a lot, we spend a lot of time working with them on making those, helping them make those decisions. And then they've done really well over the past few weeks, they've become more independent and comfortable in their roles and helping make those decisions, but we're still resourceful as needed.
Finished, Peter?
I've promised.
David, I do have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
And I noticed in the slide, I think 52,000 and some have been tested, 52,396.
Yes, sir.
And I know originally, when this first started, you had to have symptoms before you were tested. Now, you don't have to have symptoms to be tested. And I want all of our citizens that think they need to be tested, tested, but I also know, do you have citizens that come up here and get tested multiple and multiple and multiple times?
There are citizens that do test frequently, and also a lot of those 52,000 retests are because if you're in a nursing home facility, if you have an outbreak status, they have to test on a weekly basis. So you'll see those numbers repeat as well, so that adds to that number. A lot of those will be retest. And again, if someone chooses, like you said, Commissioner Lawhan, if they want to retest, if they want to test, then come on, you know, we'll test you if you want to be tested. Sometimes it's a peace of mind for people where they feel like they might have been exposed. But that does, again, that's a total test, that's not individual residents, and that's why we try to share, and that's something that's generated from the state, that's why we're able to share that information now. Good question.
My last quick one, cost of vaccines, the cost of vaccines to people.
No cost for the actual vaccine, the health department won't be charging anything. We're having federal funding help with our cost, but if you go to a private practice somewhere, they may charge you some type of administration fee. And that's, that's the time it, you know, the nurse has to bring you in and sit you down and walk you through, have you had any allergic reactions, anything, and that kind of cover that information, and you say yes or no, and then you provide the vaccine. So, depend on where you go, you may get an admin fee, but the cost of the vaccine, there is no cost of the vaccine itself. Good question, sir.
Director Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
One thing I wanted to say was kind of a comment that covered the health department in response to something you said, while ago. How many, how many people do you have at your disposal working this? How many doing testing or manning phones? How big is your staff you have to work with?
I'd have to go in and subtract some.
Just both?
Home health, I mean, if we don't include home health, and right now, we're not using care management, we're about to change that. I mean, I may have a total of, plus we have to fulfill certain other duties, we still have to man the front desk, maybe 30?
That's actually more than I thought. And I ask that just so people that may watch this later get the understanding that we don't have a 300-person staff out there doing this job, these same people that have to work doing their normal jobs now are also, have been doing contact tracing and have been doing COVID testing. And you brought the point that we're kind of backing away from contact tracing. I don't want anybody to think that's because the health department doesn't care, it's because, again, it's the same people that have to do the contact tracing and organize that now have to stop and do vaccines. So it's not that we don't care, it's just that we have a very limited professional staff to pull from.
Sure.
I know there's going to be contact tracing done by third parties and other stuff, but while this stuff has to be hid and led by the same small group of professionals that we have, so it's important for the people to understand that, it's not a lack of care.
And to that, to your point, you know, just to run the tent site, sometimes it's like 10, 10 folks, six to 10, just to run. If we go dual lane, it may take a few more, that means running two car lanes through to get everybody vaccinated.
And that comes to my second question. You, I think you said, when we, if things logistically go the way you think they might will, and follow the plan that you guys are, I'm sure, trying to modify as quickly as you can to adapt to the real world situations you're faced with, you're anticipating maybe getting up to hopefully 120 vaccines a day?
That's our goal.
Is that, is that for the county as a whole, or is that per station, per location?
That's just for what the folks to the health department's responsible for. So anybody outside of the atrium network would be folks we would be working with, and those that are not in long-term care settings, which would be handled by places like Walgreen and CVS.
Do you have any kind of number of, I mean, because 62,000 people in this county, which is a low number, at 120 a day, it's 500 days to get the county vaccinated once, you'll have to go through twice. So if you extrapolate that, after the first 28 days, you're only going to be vaccinating 60 people because you're going to be revaccinated, the other 60 people, that makes it 1,000 days to get our entire county done, which is pushing three years.
Yep. So, my thought process is, we feel like, and this is pure speculation, that kind of like the contact tracing, case investigation, the state's going to step up and contract with some of this vaccination at some point, or at least loosen the strings a little bit where if you're an end-network provider for atrium, atrium can distribute your vaccine to you, and you can, and you could at least provide vaccine to your patients, which makes a lot of
It's not for the county to rely on those, that number of, we're only going to get 120 of you a day. That's not the, that's just what your department can do.
Correct.
Hopefully. And you are hoping for some future help in that arena too from the state level?
Absolutely. And if we can somehow increase that capacity, we'll do our best to find a way to do that.
I appreciate all you're doing. And my actual last question, Peter. For the record, two of you have called me old tonight. I'm just, I'm going to slide further down the Zach side of the table. This, this was something I heard the other day, and I just wanted to know from a professional if it was accurate. Talking about the availability of the vaccine itself, I know we've heard that there was a lot of delay in hitting the numbers that the nation wanted to hit, you know, they hoped for 20 million, I think they're at 2, 2.3. I understand that. Part of it, I think, has to do with the availability of vaccine itself, I'm sure the rest of it has to do with the availability of qualified staff to administer a vaccine and locations to do it. But having said that, is this interpretation I heard correct? I heard that when, and I'll use round numbers, we get 1 million doses, well, let's say 10,000 doses of vaccine for North Carolina this week, we're giving 5,000, we're holding the other 5,000 because that's the 5,000 we have to give to the 5,000 that we just gave. So we have to hold that to use. I believe that was at first how it was being done, is that accurate, and has it changed?
To our, the latest information we have, Commissioner, is that whatever we're being provided, we can go ahead and distribute or administer, rather.
So you get 10,000 doses this week, you treat 10,000 people with the good faith that the state's going to have you, 10,000 more in 28 days?
Yep, actually CDC to the state and then to us, but that's correct, yes, sir. That's the thought process, so. And, you know, to your point about the delays, from North Carolina's standpoint, our delay was kind of with the CVMS system, which is the COVID vaccine management system, that's their software that they've got set up for entering folks that need to be in the system before they can get the vaccine. We found a workaround, like a lot of other counties, and we're either using paper forms or we're uploading our own form into our EMR, or, so we find workarounds and work through it, and just like we have to have a standing order before we can begin vaccine. So, just because we have the vaccine, we have to have all our processes in place too before we can actually administer. And I, you know, it's just, it's part of healthcare, you know, and making sure that we, we keep ourselves out of trouble and take care of our patients, so.
I appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for David? Very informative, and I appreciate the efforts you've put forth to give us this information.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Next is our convention investor bureau board appointment, but before I turn this over to our county manager, Andy Lucas, I failed to mention earlier today, he is not with us, but he is with us via computer, he's at home with COVID. So, this virus can attack you regardless of your safety measures that you put in place. I know a number of my friends that are currently battling COVID, and knock on wood, I have not, my wife has not yet, hopefully we won't, but at this time, I do want to recognize Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone can hear me.
Hold up, Andy, we can't hear you.
Okay.
I stutter, you think I could read lips?
Hello?
I can hear Andy.
All right.
Ms. Jenny?
Yes.
If you could talk to Andy easier, we've got him fine on video, we could simply let him call into the phone real quick, put him on speaker, and let him present that way.
We could, I think Sean in the video room is going to try one other thing to see, we can hear him in the video room, but not out here in the main room. Okay. But yes, that's a great idea we make, and just call him on the phone immediately.
If you all can see him on the screen, I admire him for putting a suit on. If I were in his shoes, I'd probably have my pajamas on. Let's take a five-minute recess and maybe I'll get this thing working.
Okay.
What's up, y'all? How are you? Good.
That's weird. This chance that he tested and it worked fine, so who knows? Well, can you hear me now, fine?
I can hear you, Andy. I can back in here.
Okay. Yeah, then you just put that microphone down on it.
Hello?
Hey, Andy.
Hey.
So I just have you on speakerphone and with the microphone near the phone.
Okay.
I think we're just going to improvise. Chairman Longman and the rest of the floor coming back in just a few minutes, if you don't mind. Thank you, bye.
Have you fired?
Thank you. I'll call us on the business side.
All right. All right. Hey, Andy.
I can hear you good now.
Good deal.
All right. Let's see, I believe, yeah, calls back to order, and Andy, convention investor bureau.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You've got one convention, convention and visitor bureau appointment. Ashley Smith resigned her position as the county representative, and it's been requested for Bob Renssberg to fill her that vacant seat for, for an expired term, which would expire on June 30th, 2021. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for county manager?
I could have read that off the sheet for you and saved a headache.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like the motion we, I make the motion we approve Mr. Renssberg as a county representative of CVB Board to serve until June 30th, 2021.
First and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Lucas, Stanfield Planning Board ETJ representative.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You've got, Stanfield has a ETJ for their planning board and board of adjustment, nine positions, four regulars, two alternates, and then they also have a regular and two alternates for their ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Recently, you appointed someone to their, their ETJ as a regular. Now they're asking for you to consider Mr. Lowry, Andy Lowry, for one of the alternate positions. Mr. Lowry's driveway actually is in the city limits of Stanfield, but the driveway's rather long. It's my understanding that his property where he lives actually is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So the city of Stanfield reached out to me and asked us to put this on our agenda for your consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner, County Manager Lucas?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Lowry.
Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion?
I'd like just to note, nobody else applied for that spot. He took it because he was asked, so we appreciate Ms. Lowry stepping up and doing that.
All in favor of Mr. Lowry, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. County Manager Lucas, let's talk about the 2021, 2022 budget calendar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hard to believe we're already back to that point in the year, but we're already beginning to compile revenue and expense data for 2021, 2022, and wanted to, more to formally adopt the calendar, which is in your packet. I'll just note that there's a couple dates that are to be determined. One of those will be determined hopefully this evening with you guys establishing a strategic planning retreat date. The other is meetings with, joint meetings with the school board and the community college, which we typically had. I don't believe we did last year just as a result of COVID and all the restrictions and just everybody being pulled in a lot of different directions. But certainly, we want to put that on the calendar as a placeholder in April, March, for meetings with the school board and the community college, just to make sure our planning efforts and what we've got going on is moving in the same direction. And so I would ask the board to kindly consider approval of this budget calendar, which gives staff the ability to set benchmarks and get things ready to begin the process, which will really begin in earnest when, after your retreat and the board, the department heads are given instructions in early March with their budgets due in mid-April. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman. Make a motion we approve the attached budget calendar for fiscal year 21, 22.
Motion by Commissioner Efer. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? You're none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. County Manager Lucas, strategic planning retreat.
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the past 12 years, the board's had a retreat, and I do believe that these retreats are effective. It allows you guys to really focus on your goals, and it allows you just some good time to be able to talk and, and work through some different things that just a regular board meeting doesn't typically allow. And so typically, we do those in February, and I've put down four dates in February that have usually brought us, have worked best in the past, especially for those who work. In the past, we have had a facilitator. I think with COVID, it's going to be really difficult to identify. I know the facilitator we've used in the past is not doing any in-person facilitation at this point in time. And certainly in February, I don't anticipate that things are going to be drastically better in terms of community spread of COVID. So I think it may be best if we just pump out a facilitator this year and you staff, it's not, it's not ideal, but I do think that given COVID and bringing people from outside of Stanley County or even within Stanley County into our, into a board meeting room inside all day long, I think it's just a risk that may not be worth taking. So I would, staff is certainly fine with facilitating a retreat this year, given, given COVID and the potential implications. So I would ask the board to consider establishing a date, and then, you know, we can have further conversation of a facilitator or not.
Discussion from the board as far as a date. What's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a one-day retreat at February 5th at the airport.
Commissioner Almond recommends February 5th at the airport. As a motion. You're second to that motion.
I'm actually tied up on the 5th. All the other three, I'm okay with.
So the 5th and the 19th are out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that motion to February 12th.
Mend the motion to the 12th. Mike, do you have a?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, everyone's a great facility. I just didn't know if you wanted to hold it in a larger room this year just so that folks could spread out more, but that's certainly your call.
Yes, I was, I was going to suggest that because that is a tiny place and you're in there for hours, you know. I'd like, I'd be more comfortable with more, I don't mind the date. I love the airport, but I'd like to have a lot more space. Nothing against you guys.
What do we think in the partnership, Ron?
For the senior, for the senior centers that are the larger room at the senior center can be used. And that's a good-sized room. We've got that space available. We've got the Ag Center in the open area of the Ag Center that we can utilize, which gives you some natural light, be able to see outside.
Yeah, we can truly space out at Ag Center. Set the date.
No, date's important. I think we can work on getting a facility later. I mean, obviously, if it's a county facility, we can open, we can use whatever one we want.
So we have an amended motion to have it on the 12th.
I think would he need to amend it because he made an initial amendment about having the airport-
Also amend to, to have any location up to the county manager.
We'll leave that up to County Manager Lucas, okay? amended motion, who's seconded the motion? Who wants to second it? Okay, Commissioner Jordan.
What time?
Yeah, what time, Mr. Lucas?
Typically, we've got 9:00 to 3:30.
Everybody okay with that time? Okay. All in favor of February 12th? Motion carries. And we're now at the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, thank you. I was asked by some people from the City of Alamo, if we could spread the word on their community survey they're doing. And Debbie was here, talked about the health survey that they're doing. It's really good for citizens to take, fill out these surveys. What they're doing is the City of Alamo is seeking your input on, to help them shape the, shape the city's future. And their deadline is on January the 8th, so only got a couple more days for people to fill these out. And you can fill out the paperwork at City Hall, the Stanley County Senior Center, the Stanley County Public Library, the Alamo branch, or the E. Watson Center, or the Nivens Community Center. And then they have a website that you can go to. But if you can fill these out, these things are very important. I do know like one of the last ones they did with the Parks and Recreation got us, got them to prioritize building the dog park out at Chuck Morehead. So the government officials do read these things, do the survey. So please take the survey.
Thank you, Commissioner Shuto. Now we have the consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody's reviewed those items. I'll seek a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Jordan, I need a second. Commissioner Efer. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have public comments, but no one signed up for public comments tonight. And at our next meeting, I'm going to move our, ask Ms. Brummett to move public comments to the very beginning of the meeting. That was a suggestion by Commissioner Shuto, because if I were here wanting to make public comments, I probably would not want to sit through the entire meeting. So if, the next time, we'll just move that to the first part of the meeting. Board comments, Commissioner Almond.
Just a few things. I'd like to thank David and Ms. Bennett for y'all's hard work and your presentations today. Also, please remember Commissioner Fur, and if you can call him or, you know, send him an email or anything, you know, he's probably pretty lonely right now, so, because he's also quarantined. I took this survey this morning that Peter recommended, and just because you don't live in Alamo doesn't mean you shouldn't take a survey because you might own a business in Alamo, or, I mean, if you live in Stanley County, you should probably try to take it because obviously you're probably shopping in Alamo, doing something in Alamo sort of affects you. And second, Commissioner Jordan and I are on a committee on broadband, and it also has a survey that we've been trying to promote.
Wait, just take all my time, I'm a minute.
Oh, okay, sorry. But it's, Commissioner Jordan shared on his Facebook a few times, it's on the counties, and please take that. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Jordan.
My esteemed old age, everybody's being sure they get my comments made for me because I might forget them. I also took the survey that Commissioner Shuto posted, I think I did it a week or so back, and I was actually going to bring up the point that Commissioner Almond said, you know, just because you don't live in Alamo, don't take it. If you shop there, you go there, your friends live there, your family's there, they're asking for everyone's input. You're not restricted from it because you're outside the county. We all like to partake of what Alamo has to offer, and we all in the county hope that Alamo people partake of the things that we have to offer. So yeah, take a few minutes, fill it out. You stole my next point when you said the broadband survey. I logged in tonight to look. There are 62,000 people in Stanley County right now, plus or minus, and I should think it's higher than that now, it's closer to 65. But broadband has been something that we've yelled about, yelled about, oh, we need it, oh, we need it, oh, we need it. Only 620 people in the entire county have responded to that survey. 1% of 1%. Less than 1%. So for a county that is jumping up and down screaming that we need better internet, less than 100 out of 1% would even take time to fill it out. These surveys are a great tool that, that allow the county to get information from a large amount of people. And just, those of you that may watch this, all four of you, don't think sharing it on Facebook is the end-all, be-all, you know. I do that, Commissioner Shuto does that, a lot of us do that, but there are people that don't have Facebook, people that you might want to call or remind, send them an email, something. So these surveys are important and they help our county grow. I echo this board's thoughts about Commissioner Fur and his family. I can't imagine. He's in our prayers, is all I can say.
Thank you. Commissioner Shuto.
Yes, a couple things. First of all, as Zach said, keep Commissioner Fur's family, and their thoughts and prayers. And thanks, everybody, for coming out. Nice presentations from the two of y'all out there, Ms. Bennett and Director Jenkins. And then I want to give a football shout-out. I did not realize this, but we have six people from Stanley County with connections to the NFL currently right now. We have D'Nico Autry playing for the Colts, and he's having a good season. We have RJ Prince, which is playing for the Ravens. We have BJ Hill playing for the Giants. We have Lee Autry playing for the Raiders, which has been a rough two decades for me, people just to be honest with you on that, but. And we have Antonio Williams, who made his debut with the Buffalo Bills last night, or yesterday, and he scored two touchdowns in his first time with the Bills. And then also, we have Brandon Beam from Stanley County. He's the general manager, which is huge, and he's from Norwood, South Stanley. So that's pretty impressive. This, this county is 62,000 people to have five people with contract, well, six actually with contracts with the NFL that we know of.
Thank you. Commissioner Efer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like all the rest of us, I was-
His family's in shock, but the strength of God will get him through it. And I really appreciate the COVID update. David, very good job, and Ms. Bennett, I always enjoy hearing you, so thank you, and I appreciate the staff and all the associates that work at the county office, because you all do a great job, and I thank you for that. That's all I have to say, so I need a motion to...
Chairman Longhahn, if I may, due to technical difficulties, we were unable to hear Commissioner Barbie, and he just wanted me to relay along his condolences and prayers for Commissioner Fur and his family as well.
Thank you, Ms. Fur.
Thank you.
And sorry, Mike, when you're not present, and Dice is up here, I don't see you, but I knew you were out there, and I do appreciate you being on the telephone for our meeting. No other business, I need a motion to adjourn. First and second, all in favor, please say aye. Meeting adjourned.